You get worn in short sleeve shirt tonight.
I wear short sleeves for the winter.
Are you wearing it?
Yeah. Helps me with some of your.
Does she walk faster?
No, it just makes gets me ready for the cold.
We're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, call me Jordan then.
Allegiance.
Father, which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
So no.
Second.
Paper has prepared. Public forum. You have to see faces out there, I guess we don't have it. Who are the minutes of February fourteen?
Those minutes show that we approved a payroll and payables warrant and we only approved payables warrant. That needs to be corrected to take out payroll.
And also I didn't second the motion to approve the liquor license, Dutch Young.
You did or didn't?
I did not.
Um, I think I did.
Neil's?
Oh, and oh, and even on tonight's agenda, it says approval of accounts payable and payroll. So we need to cross off payroll because we're only doing the payables. But as far as the minutes, I think that's it. I made a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Well, that's in discussion, all in favor. Committee and board reports.
They have an RSU is having a meeting tonight.
Okay.
I'll, I'll watch it and report next meeting.
Okay, one on two managers report, beginning with the log cabin old post road intersection.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I missed that meeting, but I know that I copied the Rundle roadway assessment from the Zoom meeting.
Yep.
Saw that both selectmen Du Bois and Chairman Danlick were on that Zoom conference meeting. I just wanted to sort of pick your brain as to you caught anything, gathered anything from the meeting that was meaningful for, for us to, to pursue or to, to look at or I know that they have another meeting that will be coming up later in the, I think in March here.
I think April, I think you were talking about, yeah.
The sidewalk, they wanted to, uh, site meeting.
Okay.
Right there at the site.
So, you know, Roger and I have spoken a little bit about it. I saw in here a reference that the town may want to consider some additional warning lights or something along those effects for on Old Post Road on the entrances coming into the intersection. So Roger and I talking about that, we, I'm not objectionable to those items. His only concern was he didn't want those stop signs blinking all night long if in fact they can be delayed or if there's some sort of sensor that approaches that a vehicle's coming that they blink. So we're looking into that to see what kind of cost may be associated with that. Some additional painting on the, on the roads themselves to, to caution or stop ahead and that kind of thing. We can accomplish those. Here's the issue and I, you know, and I don't think we're getting much traction with the, with the DOT was they're going to be doing a change of a culvert in that location, I think, east or west of the accident scene, going back towards Route one, they have a culvert they're going to replace. And we thought that, you know, that may be a perfect time if, if they wish to do it would be some sort of elevations to that end. So the sight lines would be better there, but I don't think they're looking at that alternative as a positive result for the work that they want to do there. So I think we'll still continue to have some conversations with it, but I don't expect elevations of that road to occur there. So I think, you know, whatever vegetation that we can do, obviously we'll do that. I, I don't, I'm not quite sure if speed was a factor in what occurred in the accident that took the man's life. I think it may have been more of a driver inattention
Driver.
as opposed to anything else now. Uh, you know, I'm not an expert, so I don't know for sure, but those are the things that I gleaned from looking at the report and talking to folks. And I, I didn't know if you had caught, you two had caught anything else that was important for us to consider.
I didn't think they foreclosed any options at this point in time. They were exploring, they're exploring miss, you know, miss aligning the, or doing the intersection completely different. So the roads aren't lined up.
Yeah.
I know they're not exactly lined up, but they were concerned about how they were and they wanted to explain how in those instances where the roads don't line up, it's much safer statistically. They were showing us that. You know, they talked about lights. Blinking light over above slow people down, perhaps even talked about getting one of those signs that, you know, tells people that they're going too fast, you know, because, you know, I know speed is simplistic in terms of trying to fix that, but you know, it's forty five there. I was kind of shocked to, to know that forty five means fifty five for most people, right? Nobody's paying attention to forty five.
Right.
And that's pretty quick for, I think, for that road. I mean, it's, it's pretty narrow.
Yeah.
But I, I had a sense that they were coming down here in April and May, whenever they, they were open to still talking about ways to resolve things. I think one of the gentleman was going to come down here himself beforehand to, to investigate the signage issue as they saw it. But as I said, they were, they were kind of asking us, Dan and I, what we thought, I mean, I didn't have any ideas. I don't know anything about roads. Phil should have been there. But, you know, as I said, I, I thought they were pretty good in terms of
Okay.
looking for ideas and ways that might, might satisfy things. And if elevation is something, you know, I mean, they were certainly talking about doing some removal of vegetation as they were doing that culvert to take here some site distances. And I think they wanted to comment. They were going to measure the site distances, I think, Dan, didn't they say? Because they didn't have any data on whether it complies with, given the speed, whether it complies with whatever standards they're looking to.
You know, they didn't have data for that. And they also didn't have, you know, they had traffic data, but they didn't have turning data on what's coming from, you know, what's coming from Route one to there, what's coming from, you know, from the postal, you know, so they're going to do some of that study.
Okay.
You know, they, they showed us a whole bunch of data, you know, throughout the years of accidents. And one of the things that Wayne Perry was there and he was really good with that. I mean, we're glad he was there. Um, he, you know, he brought up that, you know, when you're looking at the data, most of those accidents are coming from the old postal, you know, coming in from the one side, coming down. And clearly the way that road comes is clearly a sight distance. I mean, you know, yeah, there's a clearly a sight distance. And if you're not really paying attention, that stop sign comes on here pretty darn quick. So to Tom's point, they throw, they threw up a bunch of options on making that road kind of turning to the right a little bit so that it nineties, take the other one and turn the other one to the nineties or, you know, they, they showed us a bunch of different options. But to Tom's point, yeah, I agree. There, there was nothing that was determined.
Nothing was taken off the table, everything's still out there.
Yeah. And really the biggest thing is going to be, let's do that sidewalk and at that point determine
Yeah.
what to do.
I mean, obviously you'll be there and Roger would be there and Terry, you know, to lend their voices to whatever they think is appropriate. So.
Okay. Terry uses that intersection how many times today?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he, he obviously uses the, what I would term the northern side, the, the southern side. If you, I pulled out on that road and if you're trying to either go across or turn left to come up the road back towards Route one, boy, you better be, you better be looking to your left as you pull out there because the traffic can come on you very quickly.
Was that an onsite meeting?
No, it was, we had a Zoom, this was Zoom. Now they're coming, coming down onsite in, in April or May, they're going to schedule something.
Phil, I'll make sure I reach out to you, let you know. So maybe you can join us down there as well.
Yeah. The other thing that we, we pushed, impressed real hard on is, you know, they, they were talking about, you know, the average vehicle. And it's like, well, you know, there's a big difference between this time of year and in the summertime, you know, and they really need to understand that. And that was part of some of the turning studies that they were going to do.
Yeah, because that study's going through September, wasn't it? Is that what they said?
Yeah.
The turning, yeah.
Yeah, they want to do one in July and August. That'd probably be a good time.
Right.
If they put them blinking stop signs, why wouldn't we want them blinking all night?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that we are objectionable to it. Roger's only concern was, would it be, would it be hindering to the neighborhood? That was his concern. That would, and it, and it may be that it wouldn't be. Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure. I can't remember the, the, the sight distance from homes that are next to the, the roads on either sides of that. I think there's enough vegetation there that maybe would prohibit any intrusion into somebody's home as a result of it. So that was the only concern that he was expressing. I think it was just sort of a thought that came out.
They expressed that exact same thought too, that some people object to that because they don't want to know that in their bedroom all night long blinking like that.
My question would be, let's say it's on till eight o'clock at night from sometime in the morning. People get used to that light blinking all the time. They come down through there at ten o'clock at night and the light's not blinking or I'm not there yet.
Right, it's too late. Yeah. I did, I haven't actually driven down that road to really pay attention, but as we were talking about that, I got on Google and it, and I thought that the way the house sits on the, so on the northern part of Post Road on the western side, the way that house on a corner sits, to me it looked like there was, it wouldn't impede anything if they had a flashing light and even less on the other side. Cause they talked about putting signs on both sides of the road, you know, flash inside. I think now there are two stop signs now on both sides of the road, right? And they're bigger signs. But they talked about putting a flash in it and it didn't look like it would really impede any residents. But I guess the sidewalk there would have to really show that.
If you're coming down one A from Bitterford, that intersection comes up pretty quick.
Yeah.
And if, if you're expecting to see the flashing light and it isn't, it could be too late.
Yeah, you kind of get used to the flashing lights, you know, if you travel that all the time. And yeah, I, I get that, that's true.
And I understand the neighbor's concern, but maybe they could be tangled.
Or shielded so that they don't frigging, they don't flash into, into the house or something, you know?
Okay.
I can tell you, they, they just did a four way stop in Bitterford, right at Main Street and Lincoln Street. They changed it to a four way and they got, they're blinking. They've been pretty effective, I think.
Yeah.
Waking people up. That's a big change.
And they pushed that too. They talked about making that a four way stop and they showed statistics that show how that is really the, the best scenario, you know, but. Well, the concern was in the summertime, it would back up traffic, but that's why they wanted to do some turning studies.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate your comments. That sort of fills in the gaps for me. Just to let you all know that the Public Works Department has finally filled the last two positions that we have. And I'll, and I'm sorry to our new employees because their last names I'll mispronounce. But Andrew Moreau.
Maranoa.
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 Okay. He's our new, he's our new mechanic. He started this week, yeah, last, last week. And Eric Quantrill is our new driver laborer. So they've started, last time I spoke to Roger, they seem to be working out quite nicely. We'll see how the, how the winter goes. I, I know that they were part of the, the team this past weekend that worked. So we'll get an opportunity, we'll try to get them in front of you at least to say hi and put a name to a face and that way at least you know who's, who's operating some of your vehicles. So. I was contacted by the York County Sheriff's Chief Deputy indicating that Chris Woodcock will be leaving the employment of the York County Sheriff's Department. And as a result of that, we'll be down one, one sheriff until they're able, deputy, until they're able to fill the position. Presently, they have three candidates that they're, that they're looking at to consider for the position. I'll keep you apprised as to which candidate is, is chosen. At this point, Marty Harmon has gone to day shifts. So he'll be working days and then the, the new patrol person over there will be on that, that evening, evening shift. So Chris came in to see me. I wished him luck in his future endeavors. Evidently he's starting a new business or has started a business. He's found that the time between both, both professions is taking, taking away from him. So he's made a choice and moved on. So.
So Harmon is now on days?
Yes.
So who's covering for nights?
I'm sure they, I'm sure they have somebody within the patrol system that's covering for nights. I doubt if they're putting somebody down here exclusively for Rundle at this point.
We pay for that, right? We, we pay for a full time deputy.
Right. And I'm, and I'm sure that the next billing cycle, according to billing cycle we get, we'll have some sort of modification as a result of that. I thought the same thing, Dan, the minute I, you know, so I'll keep an eye on.
Okay.
The new transfer station stickers are now being distributed to our residents. I guess there was some debate as to when they were going to be, be utilized. They'll be effective April, I think it's April second. So we're, we've got the information out to the, the website. We're encouraging people when they come in to register vehicles to pick up their, their stickers. And I'll talk with Roger and Terry, they're going to take a, I think it's Saturday and spend some time at the, at the transfer station to distribute those stickers to those folks that they know that are, that are around the residence and then the folks who can prove they're around the residence to them. I'm sure they'll issue stickers there, but we've got another month or so to go and hopefully that will give us plenty of time to, to make sure that our residents get the stickers they need to, to move forward. I think we'll be flexible with it. But I think we've given it, we'll give them enough time to get moving on it.
We can sell employees, we're telling people on Saturday when I was there, they got to get new stickers.
Okay.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Came up to mine and said, you're going to have to replace that sticker.
Nice.
I should have brought some tonight, right? You know, so you guys could get your stickers, but I'm sure you'll take care of it. Not that I have any serious concerns about the ability of us having a playground here at the municipal building in a location out back here. Actually, we can talk a little bit about the location too, but my, my concern right now is the cost of these, the equipment that she's presently received estimates for. We're, we're pushing up against that hundred thousand dollar mark for playground equipment. And at this point, we just, we just don't have that money in the capital program. So unless I hear strong objections, I'm going to, you know, tell Jen to just sort of back off. I think, I, it's not that I'm opposed to it, but unless we have a huge benefactor that's coming forward tomorrow to provide us some additional funding, I just don't see us having enough money to, to pull it off unless we wanted to ask for the money through a process at, at the town meeting to, to make this a reality. That would be my only, my only thoughts on it. Now Jen may have some other ideas. She may have some other things that, that are, that are in the works that I don't know about at this point, but I'll touch base with her. But that's my initial thoughts at this point. We did go out, Roger, Jen and I went out to look at the location that we're, we're proposing to put this. Now, if you go out the, the Little Tote Road, probably about eighty to a hundred feet out, you're going to come to that first tree line that's right there on the left. And we're going to leave, I think our plan is to leave a little bit of the tree line because it's within the wetland area that we have to, we have to stay away from. And then beyond that is out of the wetland. So there's an eighty by eighty section there that we could put that playground in. So essentially as you go out, there'd be a little trees there. You come to that gate, the gate right there, the playground would be right to the left. It'll be sitting back another twenty five feet off the, the the walkway because we have the sewer line that goes out to the, the leach field that's out here. So we want to make sure that we're far enough away from that as well. So, and we've, we've put markers out here to identify exactly where we think it needs to go. So some of that perimeter work's done, but.
Is that still allow to be able to have access to further on back if we want?
Yeah, I believe it does. We've got, we would have plenty of room to the left of the, near to, near the playground to go out. We'll have room to the right of the septic, the leach field to go out because the flow trail runs right in there, but there's enough walkway there. So yeah, you could get out there and utilize some more of that. The issue we'll have will be, the, the map is pretty clear in terms of identifying wetlands. The other side, so if you went out to the right side of us, there's a lot of wetlands there that we have to be mindful of. But on the left side, going back, it seems to open up a little bit. There should be some more room there if we ever needed to use it.
Did you have any proposed amount to put into that capital budget for this year's?
I did not. We, we haven't, you know, it's interesting. We, until recently, we haven't really given it a lot of, we were hoping that the accumulation of funds that were coming from, even though they're on impact fees from the Heson development that were going in on a, on a yearly basis would give us enough money. And quite frankly, when I saw there was eighty, almost eighty one thousand in there, I kept saying to myself, geez, that's got to be enough to put a playground in. Little did I know that it wasn't enough. So that would be the other thing that we could, we could look at and consider for future development. So, but I think, you know, to, to Jen's credit, I think when she gets a chance, I'd like to have her committee talk to you folks again. What, what these playground companies do now is they hold that, they hold that value or that quote for thirty days. After thirty days, they'll reevaluate it based on what the needs are or what the materials are. And this may go up or down depending on what they're going to provide to us. So, but I think a hundred thousand is probably not a bad place to be if we're thinking about doing it.
So, has she worked at all or discussed any of this with the facilities committee on, for the RSU? Cause I know they're doing one also. And I don't know if there's, maybe she has, and I don't know if there's a, you know, better, better pricing if we kind of do with the same company or, you know, I don't know if she's done any of that, but I would tend to think that she's aware of that, but she might not.
We've had discussions. Like she's generally aware of what the school is doing, but I'm not quite sure if she's had those intimate discussions as to when they're going to get started, if in fact we could piggyback on whatever contract they have and what, if that would make a reduction in our costs.
Yeah. Well, the other thing too is maybe she can also look at like a, a two phase approach. Right, you know, do something this year or whatever, and then maybe hold something back and
Right.
try to do it next year. I don't know.
We had Roger out there primarily because, you know, we're going to have to cut some trees and then we're going to have to rub the area and then material's going to have to be brought in. So he was, he gave us a ballpark, which I built into this too, about five thousand dollars to do that work. Uh, and get that ready to go. So and timing would be, we'd want to do that. Either, you know, now that the frost is still on the ground to, to a certain degree before it gets muddy and mucky up there. We'd want, we wouldn't want to be doing it then. So.
How close to the leach field is that playground?
It will be over, I would think once the playground is put in, the, the grub area is, is at least twenty five feet away from the, the side slope of the leach field. So then you take another twenty five feet from that side slope because Roger was very concerned about that to make sure that we had enough room there. And then the playground would start within that footprint of eighty by eighty. So where if, where would equipment be in, in relation to the, to the side slope of the, the, the leach field? I do not know at this point.
We don't have the greatest soils in the world out there. And leach fields have been known to leak. And when they leak, you need room to expand.
Okay. Gotcha.
I'm not saying it will, but it can.
Okay.
My, my thought is that if we're going to put any type of a playground there, we're going to have to have cameras up in the trees because we're going to need security up there. I don't know what they have at the schools, but I'm sure they must have cameras.
Well, we have, well, we have cameras on the building
Yeah.
right now that are facing that way. So we've got, we've got a portion of the, well, we've got our shed up here, the gate going into the playground area is on camera.
Camera, yeah.
So I don't know if we could, perhaps now that we have power at the shed, maybe another camera on the shed facing out that way would take up that, that other concern that you have. I definitely wouldn't want to put them in trees, but I, I hear your concern that there needs to be something out there.
Well, if you're going to have power there, is there going to be power at the site so that the, the playground has any light at all? Or is it going to be like the one at the school, just? Or is it going to be like the one at the school, just available to use during daylight?
I don't believe we talked about lighting at all.
That would add a significant cost. There's power at the shed out there?
Yes.
Was power run underground before?
Power, they ran the line underground from, from, uh, from the building initially when they, we wanted it for Christmas. So, um, Lamond and Kay had, had tapped into the pump system, which gave us temporary power. And then they came back and ran a line from our box in here through the conduit that was in the ground. Out to the, uh, substation. And then there's a line that goes across to the shed. So everything's underground up to the shed. The shed has, uh, lights, um, in the building. Plus we have a heater for, so we can keep the vodka warm during the winter time. So there's power there. So I, I guess I'll just keep it on there and I'll, I'll have Jen come and we can have a little more discussion on that. I don't think that you folks, unless I'm hearing, I haven't heard any strong objections to the consideration of this playground. So we'll just continue to move along until we need a final judgment from you folks to, to move forward with it. Or whether we feel it's, we have enough funding to do it. Uh. Uh, just give you another quick update on, uh, our attendance on, on demand process that we're going through with our payroll. Our last, um, public works department was the last department we had to have a Zoom meeting with today. That occurred today, uh, to answer or, or to get from public works. Any, um, little pieces that we need to be mindful of as they set the programs up. So and for them would be. If there's holiday pay, the call out pay, uh, those all have to be, uh, programmed in. So in the event that they get called in, you know, the, we recognize it, we calculate it correctly as we move forward. So all those processes are done. We're still waiting to hear from Trio. If, in fact, we're gonna get a cost associated with the transfer or the, the movement of two systems together. So they can read each other. So we're still waiting for that, but this thing is moving forward. Um, seems to be moving forward quite, quite easily at this point. It seems, everybody seems to, to think it's gonna be an easy conversion. So.
I was just working with Lisa when she's doing payroll.
Um, what it will do is it'll make, uh, it'll make payroll significantly easier to do. It should be pretty much done.
So instead of having that whole stack of time cards.
It'll all be on computers, laid out and.
And it will figure out everything.
Correct.
All there, what can be in the pay and run the, run the reports.
Yeah, and the department, and then she'll have to convert it from the attendance on demand to our Trio program. In order to, you know, take it out of the proper accounts and also make sure that the, the checks get cut and all those kinds of things. So, yeah, there's still a little bit of labor and, you know, work involved, but it should be significantly less.
Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to the business section of our agenda. First item there was repurposing the town hall.
Yes, I, um, the, the Arundo Historical Society asked me to, uh, so if they could take a visit of the old town hall. So last week, uh, we went through, um, the old town hall and they, they saw some items in there. That they, that would be very helpful for them in terms of their, um, the work that they're doing at the historical society. In other words, they saw the, uh, I, I didn't know this until, uh, Jade Cockets was present. But the counter that was placed in there was constructed by Jade a number of years ago. Evidently a portion of that, um, because you put it in sections, a portion of that could be removed. And they would love to have, um, that counter so they could use up, or, or I guess their visiting center. Whatever they're proposing to do. I'm sure that Velma knows all more about it than I. We also, you know, there was a couple, uh, flat files or two, two draw flat file that, uh, uh, that Donna DeKindred said. It would be very helpful for them to keep records in. Um, and then we went upstairs and we saw some old mapping. Whether we take the maps here, they were, they have the opinion that whatever we should do with those mapping, they should be salvaged. It should be retained whether either with the historical society with us. So those are decisions we need to make. But they, they, they would like to have some items out of there and to repurpose them, um, at their facility. And I said that I would bring it forward to the board and see if they, um, are remenable to, uh, having some of those items. Be transferred up to the historical society. So.
I have had it. Do we have authority to do that?
Town property.
Well, I have it in front of you. That's why I have it in front of you. Uh, I think it's less than whatever, uh, let me look at the, let me look at the, the charter again. Look at the, if there's any, any objections to it, but.
The voters voted to demolish the building just the way it sits.
But they didn't vote that we can give away anything that's contained within the building.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
But we have, we have the right to say we're gonna put it all out for bid or, I mean, we have the right to be able to donate that stuff to whoever we want, right?
No, I don't think so. We gotta get authority from.
Even if it's staying in the town?
Doesn't, doesn't the demolition company? If they win the bid to do the demolition, they own everything that's in that building. At that point, could the demo company give that stuff away instead of putting it into the dumpster?
I suppose if in fact, you know, the bid comes in and we keep all the personal property, um, and that's. I, I guess I, I don't know about that. So is that, is that the way it works though? Is that the way it works? If you were gonna demo a building, you keep?
If we put a bid in on a house, a demo.
Yeah.
When we get there, we go through the house, make sure that there's no, uh, homeless people, whatever, anything.
Right.
And whatever's inside that building, in our opinion, automatically belongs to us.
Okay.
We're responsible to dispose of it. And if the owner didn't take it away, then we have to take it away. And occasionally we find something that has some value and we keep it. But you're right, town property might be a whole different story.
I don't know. I mean, the building itself is town property and we voted to, to trash it. So.
They voted to demolish it. Right. I mean, that's fine.
To me, I, you're, I'd look at that and I think that.
Right, we can do whatever we want with the stuff that's inside. I mean, if we.
They're going to take away, I think, uh, or all of that counter that was in the, that was in the office. Uh, that Jake built in the first place. So he knows pretty much how it went together.
Sure.
Anything else in there, uh?
Yeah, there's a, there's some, the, the only, the only, uh, desk or office piece that's still worth some value. And that we need to get rid of for money would be the old, uh, the, the piece that was in my office. And that's still there. So, and that's a, that's a pretty significant piece. I've had people ask about what we were gonna do with it. And I, you know, always say to them, we'll put a good bid in, we'll see what we can do. So. But that's as far as it's.
The old wooden desk disappeared years ago, right?
I haven't seen any wooden desks in there. There's some old office furniture that's really dated that.
I mean, we could, we could certainly put a list out and say. You know, we're taking bids on this, right? I mean, it's no different than a piece of land that we own that we say, hey, you know, we wanna put out for bids.
So we have authority under, under the town meeting warrant article to do that.
Right?
So without that, we couldn't do that. No, that, that's always dealing with tax acquired property or property that's gifted to us. That's the only stuff that we can put out the bid. And so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I think you just gotta look at, I just don't wanna, you know.
What about like the old fire trucks and stuff that we put out the bid? So.
Gotta, gotta get authority.
Public work trucks, we did, we did.
Yeah, I think, I think we have, I think we have a written, uh, we have a warrant article up here that we approved that provides us the authority to do that.
Right. One of the, you know, those last ones that we all bump up together and never, never act on individually.
Put it on a warrant article for this, for this.
Well, I think it's there.
Yeah.
No, for the, for the town hall property, town hall stuff.
Well, let me look at the, the generic warrant article may be enough that, that we cover it.
And if the historical society needs to pay the town a dollar for the material, then they'll do that.
Yeah, right. We have the final say. We don't necessarily have to take the highest bid or anything like that. So.
Yeah, don't we have a paragraph in there somewhere that says, we have authority to, to dispose of articles that the town along the wants and needs? And I read that somewhere.
I, 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 you know, I'll check tomorrow.
Check the warrant.
I'll check the warrant, see, see what, how expansive it is. I just wanna make sure that we got the authority.
But I, I'm not hearing any objections.
Oh, no, I don't have a challenge.
You're just bringing up to be cautious, that's all.
I'd like to see them have it.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, no, no.
We can donate anything in there to anybody. I'm all for it, but.
Well, what, what they like it for is a smaller house that's going to be our office on, on the back wall. They're going to take it and use it, the counter on the back wall. It's what they're thinking of anyway.
Okay, now we have, uh, pricing suggestions for the transfer station.
Yes, Casella has provided, uh, some thoughts of what the price list should be moving forward. And I, what I did is I provided you what the present price list is. And what the, uh, what the proposed price list was from, uh, Casella. Uh, this was a brochure that they're trying to put together to, when the time comes to get out. So, um. As I look at the price listing, I generally do not have any problems with any of the universal waste. Electronic waste or the tire pricing that I see here. Uh, the only one that concerns me is the construction debris pricing at a hundred dollars a yard. Um, and then you base a hundred dollars a yard on what they, uh, on their, on their present listing. What a small pickup is, what a small pickup round it is. So they're saying a small pickup, if it's fully packed. Would be a one point five yards. That'd be a hundred and fifty bucks for somebody to get rid of something along those lines. So I guess that's the only, um. When I use, when I reference the old one compared to what it's, wanna charge a hundred bucks a yard. Um, they do leave in here however, and I don't know how that would work. It says all, it says the tenant has authority to refuse large loads and determine load size in all cases. So I guess I need a little more clarity on what, how they're gonna determine load size.
That was, it was in the, just the same note that's on the current also.
Okay.
That was one of my questions is how do you, you know, if I got a quarter of a pickup truck, so are they just gonna charge me twenty-five bucks or?
That's what it says. They're gonna at least charge you twenty-five dollars minimum for those, that construction debris. So.
I mean, that's a huge increase from forty dollars to a hundred dollars.
Correct. And I'm not sure how long the forty dollar a yard construction debris numbers here. But Phil, Phil weighed in on this the last time. And I, I can't remember, Phil, uh, based on your, your, uh, work. What you were getting charged for per yard to get rid of material.
We, uh, we send our stuff to, uh. Either Old Orchard, which is Casella.
Yeah.
Or Sanford Simpson. And, uh, they are now up to a hundred and ten a ton.
Hundred and ten a ton? So they, so they weigh you?
Yeah, they, they, they weigh you going in.
So a ton is what?
Yeah, and it's a hundred and ten dollars a ton. We use, uh, most of the time, we use A1, uh, disposal.
Yeah.
They come in with forty yard dumpsters and we fill it and we pack it in as much as we can. And when they deliver it, at the end of the job, we get a list of every load. And they average usually between seven and nine ton. So that's a buck ten. Uh, well, we pay them a flat rate of a thousand dollars a can.
Okay.
And two hundred of that is trucking. Some cans are six, seven tons, some are eight and nine. So at, at the end, it comes out reasonably. So, uh.
So a hundred and ten a ton, this what, two thousand pounds in, in a ton? And what's a yard? About twenty, depending on the weight of the material?
Well, we, we, we fill a, we fill a forty yard dumpster with, uh, the construction debris. And it comes out, let's say it comes out seven ton. So that's what, fourteen thousand pounds.
Okay.
And that's a forty yard dumpster. So typically is. The yard isn't that much. A cubic yard.
Yeah.
Isn't that much? Cause it's what, three by three. It's a cubic yard.
Cubic yard is three by three.
Three by three by three is a cubic yard.
Yeah, and most small pickup trucks are half tons. So they're a thousand, you know, they're a thousand pounds. So.
I think we just need to have some more discussion on that, on that demo number.
So on the recycling piece?
Yeah.
I never really paid much attention. You know, the only thing that I bring down if we recycle is, you know, the plastic bottles and cans.
Yeah.
Uh, but the current says zero sort recycling. And then on this sheet, are they, we, do we have to, just stuff all have to be sorted? Or is it all going into the same dumpster or?
Same, zero sort.
Right. So it's still gonna be zero sort. It all goes into the same dumpster.
Correct.
But it's all this up here, the cardboard, office paper, newspaper, magazines, plastic bottles, aluminum steel cans, plastic bottles. That's all zero sort.
That's correct. That goes under one container.
And what are they charging for that now?
What? We don't have a charge. We pay, we pay, we pay so much, we pay so much a month for, for the contract and anything else is up to them.
But before all of this, they were charging us a little bit less for, for recycle.
Oh, yes. Yes. There was a, there was a per ton amount that they were, that they would rate.
There's a per pound amount.
Yeah, based on the, on the, uh, you're talking about the consumer. I thought you were talking about the town and what we pay.
No, no.
The consumer, yes, they pay a certain redu- reduced rate on the, um, on the zero sort recycling.
It's almost like half, half a punch of a regular.
Yeah, it's a dollar five a pound. It was one eighty, but now it's, uh, what, two, two punches and one punch.
So now with this new punch system, it's a big, it's what, like a thirty pound bag, whatever, we were allowed. What's the, what, what are they gonna punch for this stuff? When I bring recycle, what, what are they gonna punch now?
It depends on where we're gonna bid. We don't even know yet.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Uh, because, you know, we may, we may keep the punch system depending on what the board and the budget board does with the budget. Or we may do away with it. And if we did away with it, there would be no cost other than your taxes.
If we keep the punch system, that, that cost is, is gonna go up on everything, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So there's no effective date for this at this point, is it? Okay.
Can we legally say that we don't take demolition debris?
Yeah, you can say that.
What if I come in there with a? What if I come in there with a three eighteen-yard trucks loaded with demolition debris?
The tenant has authority to refuse your load.
Yeah, that would be considered a large load. They'd send you down to someplace else. They'd send you to Old Orchard. Yikes.
All right.
All right.
Okay. Okay, we just got a payable warrant to approve. Is that right, Roma?
Not payable, yep.
Okay. On favor. Is there any other business before we adjourn?
Yeah, can we go, can we go back a little bit, Tom, on the, the playground equipment?
Sure.
Keith, can you, um, for the budget board, can you like maybe throw some numbers and just, some numbers as a thing for discussion during a budget board? Maybe it's something that we eventually bring up as a town vote, the town want to spend whatever, X amount of money for playground. I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing that out, but maybe it's something that we have a discussion on that with the budget board also.
My, my initial thoughts on it, because as we sit here discussing that this evening, be that I think that we still have some flexibility within our fund balance that I would recommend that we take a one-shot deal to complete the playground. Would say twenty, twenty thousand additional dollars, eight, that'd give us about a hundred, a little over a hundred grand.
That would be a good discussion at the budget board, yeah?
Put it as a warrant article, and then if that gets approved, then it would be no impact on the tax dollar per se. And it's not a huge amount. It would get the project completed.
It's still, you know, a hundred thousand still seems like a high.
I, I did talk to Jen about that, and I raised what you raised in terms of KES, I guess, putting it. And she knew about that, but she, she had put out feelers to try to find, get bids from people, and the only pieces she got were these folks, not from the folks who are doing KES. I think that's it. She says that's a much more expensive system, like, that they're putting it down there than these folks are off.
She wanted to keep it more traditional.
Right.
That was the traditional, uh, and the color combination was something that would blend into the area too.
Yeah, I certainly would imagine that the school itself would be a much bigger system.
Right, exactly.
Cover all of the, all the grades and, but.
Yeah, it was a different animal as far as what she know. And the problem here too was, when we originally spoke, she thought we could do this community thing and we could construct it. Well, it turns out you need twenty-five or thirty people to show up, and that doesn't sound realistic to me.
Yeah.
You know.
Not in today's age.
No.
I don't think you're going to get that kind of people showing up.
And, and I know she wants this relatively soon. I mean, I was going to suggest maybe she would get doing some fundraising, but that takes a while. That takes, you know, it takes time, but.
I'm good.
Okay.
I, um, I broke up the last year's book. The only article that remotely covers our butts would be probably thirty-one. And it reads, "Shall the town vote to authorize the board's agreement to sell or otherwise dispose of excess vehicles and equipment pursuant to and consistent with the written policy adopted by the board's agreement after, after public notice and deposit any of the proceeds in the appropriate department's reserve account?"
That's just vehicles.
And equipment.
Yeah.
Does that qualify as equipment or?
Well, it's got something to hang your hat on, I guess, yeah.
I would say it qualifies as equipment. But it sounds like we have to have public notice, public meeting.
This equipment required around the town office.
The other one was strictly, uh, property.
Phil property.
Yeah.
Well, the, the other thing too, I'm not sure exactly when you want to start the demolition, but obviously that's got to go out for bid and all of that stuff. But we could, for this year's warrant, if we don't get it in time, we could just make sure that we add that to this year's warrant if we find that we need to. You can just add furniture or whatever, I mean, just, or a separate article.
Either that or maybe we ought to do something more in terms of getting us more authority.
Right. So change that thirty-one to expand it a little bit.
Beyond, you know, equipment, office, you know, say what it is, but give us authority without having to go through perhaps, if we're going to gift it, it's different from trying to sell it and get the best price we can for an item. But I mean, if we're going to gift it to, and maybe the article's got to talk about gifting it to nonprofits or, you know, those types of things. But it might make some sense to look at a, you know, kind of go getting us some authority to do that kind of stuff. May never, it's not going to arise very often, obviously, but.
Yep.
It's not every day we turn a building down.
Make a motion, we adjourn at seven fifty-four P M.